Welcome to Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. City Council meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Laura Dean Wiley, a member of the Epic Church. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Dear God, trusting in you, we join one another in this community, a community of faith and purpose on a journey, a journey I hope to grow even deeper in love for one another and for you. Let us never lose hope along the way. Help us to be strong, strong in the work of this city. Be with the mayor, the council, the city staff, and the citizens of Independence moving forward with faith through good works, temperance, kindness, and a consensus along the way. Help us all to show love in and for our community. It is in your strength and love that we will achieve for the greater good of Independence, and for that, we are blessed. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
McCandless.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. And just a quick note, Councilmember McCandless has COVID, so that's why she's joining us electronically this evening. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
If I may, I'd like to move to take item number 23001 out of order and move it before citizen requests.
Now, there's a motion to move this item forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item, that we refer item 23001 to staff for further refinement and action before bringing it back to us.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment. We had town hall last week, and lots of comments were brought up. I received a number of emails, I'm sure others did as well. You know, I'm in favor of moving this back to staff, letting them work on it some more, and bringing forth at some future time a more refined document that will be one that we don't have to then fix again. And so, that would be my reason for making this motion to refer.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Please proceed.
I have no problem doing that. I think it's the right decision based on some of the events that have taken place over the last week. But I don't think it's city staff's responsibility to figure this out. I think this is the council's responsibility. These are the rules of procedure for council, and I think we own this. And we need to have, we need to have the opportunity and the time to discuss what's important to us and do what we feel we need to do.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Okay. I'll need a motion to suspend the rules.
We've got some citizens' requests that are not, or some, pardon me, some folks that want to talk who are not citizens.
I'd move to suspend the rules so that out of residents, out of city residents may speak.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
All right. There are people who signed up online first. Pardon me. I've got Janet Conroe and Dan O'Neill will be there. So Janet, you'll go first if Janet is here. Thank you, Janet.
Okay, my name is Janet Conroe. I live in the 3rd Council District, and I am speaking on that item, the 23001, the council rule changes. I do appreciate that the mayor and council member that reached out to me when I signed up and the town hall meeting, I thought was a great idea. It gave everybody that was interested a chance to speak, and they were heard. There were two items in the rule changes that concerned me enough that I felt compelled to get up and speak tonight. The first one is the 30-minute time limit. When you're reconsidering how you write these rules, that is something I feel very strongly about. If a topic that is on the agenda has citizens so concerned that they are willing to get up here and speak, you need to listen to us and just say thank you when we are done. The other issue that has caused a lot of the discussion is how the procedure for placing an item on the agenda. The council members, you just need to communicate with each other and with the staff, but it has to be a process that is fair to all parties. The majority can change in any election. The minority always should have the right to be heard. You, as a council, need to put aside your individual agendas and be willing to work together for the betterment of the community. And I would ask you all, read your charter, Article 5 again. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Janet. We've had this discussion many times. This is a city council meeting. It is not a sporting event. We are not going to entertain applause after every speaker. Thank you. Mr. Dan O'Neill, please state your name and your address, and please proceed. You have five minutes.
My name is Dan O'Neill, and I live at 2700 Coachman in Independence. And I'm here to speak in favor of the ordinance amending Article 1 for the committee or for the council meetings. Specifically, I'm in favor of the changes, generally speaking, but I wanted to talk about one particular part, and that's the second part the previous speaker talked about, specifically Section 1.01.009, the Order of Business and the Preparation of the Agenda. Agenda items added by the council members. This rule makes sense to me because of such government waste of time and money. In other words, they never pass, they never pass legislation, especially on a state level or a national level, unless it has legs. Well, if you don't know what that, if you don't know what that term means, it means that the legislation doesn't have a possibility of being passed at all. So they spend a lot of time studying and talking about it, and then they never pass it because it doesn't have legs. So I would remind you that you have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens to guard the resources that are made available to you. And one of those, part of that resource is time and money. So I would urge you to require co-sponsorship of four members of the council in order to bring forward an item to the agenda. And I think because of that, you would be, you would have to address the important issues, and you would be bypassing those issues that don't have legs. So I urge you to support the amendment in total. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Ms. Colleen Huff, you've talked to us before, so you have three minutes, please. And please state your name. And then Richard McKee, you'll be next, if you can be ready to go. Richard, that'd be great. Thank you, Colleen.
Hi, it's Colleen Huff. Good evening, mayor and council members. I live at 717 South Willis Avenue. And as you mentioned, this is my second time talking about this, and the first thing that I want to do is just assure all the residents, because we were promised that prayer would remain a part of the council meetings, but the document that was on the agenda just set a moment of silence. So I've had a lot of people reach out to me over this matter, so I just want the council to reassure us that that is a working document and that prayer is in fact going to remain a part of the council meetings. And also, I do want to talk about Item C, which is adding items to the agenda, because we all know that most of the items on the agenda are not driven by the council members. Most of them are driven by the city manager or other departments throughout this city, and very few are actually driven by any one council member. And usually, if that's the case, it's because, you know, there's something going on in their district, or they've had an overwhelming number of people reach out to them over a certain matter that's worthy of hearing. And so, I think, well, and you may do some kind of analysis to see exactly how many agenda items are really driven by council members, because I think what you're going to find out is it's very few, and the ones that are do not require a lot of financial legwork or legal, illegal time, because, you know, I mean, if time is money, then we need to consider that. So I think that any council member that brings an item to the agenda, I think it needs to be heard because they represent the residents. And so, I don't, I don't think that that should be a majority. The majority would rule over that item, of course, but it needs to be heard, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. McKee, come forward, please. State your name and your address, please, and you have five minutes.
Richard McKee. I live at 3804 South Hayden Drive. Good evening, citizens and council. This city needs to be about services for the citizens, like street repair, police, parks. Ben Franklin was asked by a woman when leaving the meeting that was forming in the Constitution, what kind of government have you given us? And he said, "A republic, if you can keep it." What if one district has a need requested by councilperson or citizens, but would that mean that if that happens, that no resolution allowed? What if your resolution to the council has only two councilpersons for it? No resolution allowed? Councilpersons take an oath to uphold the Constitution, I believe. That assures the council and the citizens of free speech. This one rule is meant to silence some on the council and/or the citizens. Let's own up to debating the resolution, resolutions or the issues. What if the majority on the council changes? Will we change the rules again? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. Ms. Lucy Young, and then Michael Talcott will, Talcott will be after her.
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive. Thank you, Mr. Fears, for pulling this item. The agenda item repealing the council rules and procedure calls for greater transparency and improved customer service, but is this merely lip service? Legislatures do not try to short-circuit the voters' voices by making it harder to speak to the full council. I'm going to pull this off. Sorry. Make it to speak to the full council or to contact individual councilmembers via email. Let's be clear. These changes would raise the threshold for introducing legislation that require approval of a council majority prior to being placed on the agenda. This will change the charter's intention of being a nonpartisan committee of seven members to a majority-minority form of government, just like Jeff City. And Jeff City, if you look at their journal two days ago, voted down two items very similar to what you had proposed in those new rule changes. This is not what the city charter was based on. The Good Government League fought for nonpartisan council and a weak mayor form of government. Strong mayors had taken advantage of situations, and cronyism and corruption flourished. City contracts, city employment, and city committees were stacked with only those that agreed with strong mayor's agendas. This will make Independence politics even more decisive. The council procedure changes state that every member must have an equal opportunity to participate in decision-making. Creating majority-minority voting members will ensure anything but that. This is everything the Good Government League worked against. The charter clearly states that all seven council members have an equal voice. The mayor is merely a chairman, not the sole authority. Councilmembers, you were elected to create legislation. Don't relinquish that right. These proposed changes smell funky, like a power grab. This inflexibility prevents the council from presenting different opinions. Former Kansas City Mayor Mark Funkhauser tried this type of experiment. He and councilmembers ended up jamming fingers in one another's eyes and continued to stir bad blood between the councilmembers and himself. The councilmembers became so ingrained, so instinctive, that they opposed him without even thinking about what it would mean to the city. Funkhauser quickly gained a reputation as a divisive, meddlesome, and controlling figure at City Hall. The Windell County Commissioners just voted to reduce their mayor's power and remove his ability to control their agenda items too. So why is Independence going in a different direction? Our city council voted to let the charter committee meet and make recommendations. Don't try to reinvent the wheel when the committee hasn't been able to formulate any proposed changes. The Jackson County Historical Society Archives has 27 folders of former Mayor Barbara Potts about a charter revision. This stuff is rocket science and requires more than one person's opinion. Another funky example is changing the citizen's ability to speak at meetings. The first proposed changes wanted to move the speakers to the end of the meeting, and the council thankfully voted that down. Unfortunately, these latest proposed changes reduced the available time to 30 minutes per public comment. Quote, "The public comment section of the meeting will run no longer than 30 minutes. This will reduce the number of first-time topic five-minute speakers to a maximum of six citizen speakers a meeting, twice a month." Only 12 out of the cit, out of the city of 120,000 residents, not counting when you waive council rules to allow nonresidents to speak. I attended a special call meeting on Thursday, January 12th. The topic was about the marijuana tax and how to word the ballot language and how to spend that money if the tax was approved.
You have one minute.
Thank you. The council recommended to the, to those, excuse me, to use those tax dollars to support the Independence Police Department, fully acknowledging that these dollars would not fund a new IPD building. The council admitted they would need a bond and the support of the majority of voters to approve that bond before the building could be built. The consensus of the council said they needed to create an atmosphere of trust and have open dialogue with the citizens. These proposed changes will limit that dialogue. They will suppress the voters, the voices of every voter that you hope to engage for a possible $90 million bond. Is this the way you want to start out? I'm going to submit this to you, Madam City Clerk, because I didn't have time to finish my entire report. I'd like it part of the record, please.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Good evening, council. My name is Mike Talcott, 1901 South Lake Drive. As you all know, I serve on the PUAB, but I'm not here representing them tonight. At our last meeting, the PUAB voted to approve the plan presented to us to repeal the 6% electric rate reduction. I was the lone no vote. First, let me point out there's a five-year moratorium in place on that 6% reduction. Secondly, I voted in opposition because I view that my service on that advisory board should be to represent and protect the ratepayers. As I understand it, the repeal of the city's municipal rate is a separate issue and will be at the discretion of the council. If the individual ratepayers and the businesses should lose the rate reduction, so should the city. If IPL is to be run as an independent business, the city should not be given preferential treatment over other businesses, and IPL ratepayers should not be subsidizing cities' operations. May I remind everyone that IPL is proposing repealing the 6% while ratepayers still reeling from the pandemic or feeling the effects of inflation, even recession. Spire has recently raised rates twice, up to 13% for some. Gas prices are up, grocery prices are through the roof. At last check, our church's Independence Campus food pantry is trying to meet the needs of nearly 200 families per week. According to the 2020 census, 16% of our citizens live at or below the poverty line. Many of our ratepayers are on fixed incomes. Any of their cost of living increases were already eaten up by Spire's rate increase and the increase in food and gas prices. Businesses that survived the pandemic are now struggling with, struggling with inflation as well. In my opinion, now is not the time to repeal the 6% IPL rate reduction. Now, having said all that, my concern is the council is once again ignoring IPL and the PUAB, kicking the can down the road yet again on IPL issues. Even though I'm against the rate repeal, IPL was scheduled to present their plan at the last study session, but was removed from the agenda with no public explanation. I would really like to know why this issue couldn't be addressed in study session. I've only been on PUAB for a short time, but have paid attention to IPL issues for many years. If IPL is truly having financial problems, it appears primarily because they've been hamstrung by poor leadership and past council votes. That $10 million wasted on Missouri City would have come in handy for needed IPL infrastructure maintenance or generation through the years. Just like it appears some on the council want to publicly stifle the opinion of citizens, it seems they do not want to hear the plans of the IPL director or the PUAB. These issues, as tough as they are, need to be addressed so IPL can plan next steps no matter what the council decides. For years, the city's leadership has drug its feet, causing unnecessary expensive knee-jerk reactions and poor decisions, or is the plan to just stall until necessary charter changes are made in order to sell IPL. Now the council wants to limit my elected representative's ability to bring forth agenda items that constituents may want addressed. If the rules of procedure are approved tonight as posted, my councilmember would not be able to be, to independently bring forth those items such as a rate or IPL issue. May I remind the council, this is not a democracy. A democracy is two wolves and a sheep deciding what's for dinner. This is a constitutional representative republic. This means the council has been elected to serve us and represent all of their constituents, even if they may not necessarily agree with them. And if the rules of procedure are approved as posted tonight, I may not be able to address the council publicly in the future. If public comment is limited to 30 minutes total, and speakers must sign up on the Friday prior to the meeting, are we to trust those, that those few speakers will not be handpicked depending on the topic of discussion or who they are or who they know?
You have one minute.
Thank you. I'm sure if I go up to City Hall the Friday before the meeting and fill out my request to comment card with the topic of IPL issues, I can probably expect that I may have just shown up a just a little bit too late to be included in that 30-minute allotment. In conclusion, I would like to see the IPL issues in the future be addressed by the council in a timely manner, and if they can't be, we need to publicly know why. And I respectfully request that you all vote no on the ordinance amending Article 1 council meetings as currently written. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Fairbanks, you're next. Thank you, Chris.
Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. I am Chris Fairbank, Local 781, President of Professional Firefighters here in Independence. Last week, ESCI, Emergency Services Consulting International, presented to you a standards to cover deployment study for the Independence Fire Department. The information provided helps raise awareness of areas of our department that has long needed to be addressed. I am proud of the assembled committee, which includes Local 781 and fire administration members. The committee has already begun work prioritizing these recommendations within the study. The committee has some significant challenges ahead of them, but I am confident that they will work through these recommendations to develop a strategic plan to help our department and take it into the future and provide a better service for our citizens. Like our brothers and sisters at IPD, our department desperately needs overstructure, or infrastructure that is long overdue. This was clearly outlined when our citizens voted to increase our fire protection sales tax. We currently have five stations outlined within the study that either need to be rebuilt or renovated, in addition to adding additional station on the southeast part of town. As we move through this process, I hope the council gives equal consideration to all of public safety, both IFD and IPD, by providing safe and healthy working environment for all our first responders. Last, I would like to take a moment to speak on the proposed rules of procedure ordinance. Again, I applaud this, this council for taking the direction this evening to have that further reviewed. Many of my members have asked how this concerns our citizens, employees, and members of the coalition. I hope it wouldn't. However, we feel that these new rules could significantly silence our councilmembers, constituents, and city employees who seek to be heard within these chambers. The current rules of procedure allow business to be conducted. I realize that they, this may not always be perfect, however, it is democracy at work. I hope the council takes consideration when it comes time to vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Sorenson, you're next.
Since you have pushed this off to a later date and it can be studied, I would rather not speak at this time and wait to see the final documents brought back in the future and address it at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Maria Vargas. And then Butch Nesbit is next, so.
Okay. Hello. Um, okay, sorry, I get a little nervous with this. So I want to thank you guys for getting the time to listen to me. I have spoke with Planning Commission regarding the zoning change for 713 South Willis Avenue, that's 23005. And I hope I get the same result from you guys. I did get approved from Planning Commission 70. I do have some photos here regarding the home that I made in over a time lapse of five years. And I do apologize they're not in color, but I do want to get this out to you guys.
Hold on. If you could hand it to the city councillor. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Just want you to take a look at what I've done and the process that it's taken me and for me to be here to speak to you guys, just for you guys to take in consideration that I'm a young adult and I'm here to thrive in this world and want to make a change and hope you guys can make the best decision for this, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I didn't quite hear. For clarification, did you say you're speaking on 23005?
Yes, I am the home.
Zoning change.
Zoning change. Resilience.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Butch Nesbit, 3817 South Milton Drive. Mayor and council, thank you for letting me speak again about this decision. I'm glad you guys postponed it. We had a little discussion with the mayor back on Thursday. I asked him several questions. None of the questions really got answered. He just kept putting them off. I mean, some of these proposals, like we're wanting to change it for people, and I said, well, has anything happened that needs to be done like this? Has anybody been bringing up things that are not needed to be on council? And nobody could ever answer me. So I just, like I say, if nobody wants to listen to what people talk about when we're up here talking, I mean, there's no sense us talking. So I guess we'll go with that. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Mr. Nesbit. Next is Mr. Kenneth Love.
Kenneth Love, 16808 East George Franklin Drive, Independence, 64055. Good evening, City Manager, Council, and Mayor. It's kind of quiet in here. Several weeks back, or let me back up even a little further, last year, this committee or this council made some rule changes about citizens clapping or liking when somebody's up here speaking. It's a change of rule and procedures. But for some reason, if a city employee receives an award... But for some reason, if a city employee receives an award, it is perfectly fine to watch every councilman, city employees, city manager, stand up and applaud. I listened to you tonight, gavel, our residents. I think that was unprofessional. That's just my opinion. We come here because we see problems and we want our voices heard. If you were speaking and I thought it was something good, I would applaud you. And I think that's all the right our citizens ask us for the same. If it's again okay for our council to applaud a worker that has worked their tail off to receive that award, then it is perfectly fine for a resident that might like what I'm saying here tonight to applaud. Now, I could stand here for probably four more minutes, or whatever it's like.
You got three and a half.
Well, three and a half. I could stand here, twiddle my thumbs. That's my right as a speaker.
Absolutely.
That's holding up your time. That is stalling business of our council. Thank y'all, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Mr. Huff, you're next.
Mike Huff, sixteen-five-zero-one East George Franklin Drive, Independence, Missouri. It's kind of hard to follow Lucy over there. Quite a good job there. I did have a couple of things. I don't know who come up with this rules of procedure change. It's, it's really a joke. But since we've had so many speakers about that, my biggest deal is the clapping here. That's the freedom of speech. You're, you're taking away my First Amendment. I have a right that, that's an expression of speech. And my main thing here, though, since we've already heard these two things, is professionalism and, and being polite. And where I come from, when someone has the floor, everybody's attention should be there, not back here back talking, chewing gum, stuff like this. If this is a professional meeting, let's make it professional. I did leave, one other thing, I did go to the, the meeting at five o'clock today, and I noticed that there was a person on the council that when the votes come up, that they were shaking their head no, trying to sway votes. I think that's very unprofessional, and it really is a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Laura Dean Wiley.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm going to say staff as well, and our citizens. One of the reasons I wanted to speak tonight was that I had come from the meeting last Monday night with some grave concern about our police. On Wednesday, I was fortunate enough to actually see for myself the police building, tour it. And so, being that I attended the special called session on Thursday, I'm going to do something that will probably surprise all of you, and that I, I want to thank you. I want to thank the council and the mayor for meeting, for having a discussion that I believe potentially could be better for this city. I want to thank Zach Walker, our city manager, for his thoughtful presentation. I found the information to be very accurate to what I saw on that Wednesday morning. One of the other reasons I wanted to talk to you about it, though, is because I became even more gravely concerned about the liability to this city based on what I saw at the police station. I feel like there is an imminent concern for an emergency, an accident, or liability to this city that could happen to a detainee, an employee, or visitor. When you see water running through electrical conduit, when you see unknown colored stuff flaking down the walls or flowing in the air, and quite frankly, pretty disgusting to say this out loud and on the record, but when you hear of stories of excrement rolling on the floors, I don't know anybody that would want to step into that building. So my reason for bringing this up again, because we know all that, is that we will not be able to fix it just through the marijuana tax. But I implore you to make the marijuana tax the first effort to showing your support for IPD. I implore you, secondly, to make a bond issue come, not in two years, probably not even one year, sorry Zach, to get your stuff ready, but there's another election in November. We need to move quickly, swiftly, and forward on putting our priority in Independence to a new police center. Because truly, it's what's going to fix a lot of the other citizen concerns. It's going to help fix broken windows syndrome. It's going to help prevent code enforcement delays. Biggest is that it's going to hopefully keep the strongest, best, most talented force in Independence. It will help with recruiting, and it will help with retention. And that's what I'm concerned about when I look at a future for Independence, is are we going to put our money where the safety of the citizens are through a public safety center? Or are we going to allow it to be underwater? That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone else on that has signed up. So that brings us to the consent agenda.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Can I make an announcement before you move on to consent agenda?
Please.
I just want to let the council know, since you all did not vote to make any changes to the rules of procedures tonight, based on the current rules, the first council meeting in February will take place on Wednesday, February eighth, unless you all voted to change that. That's because there is an election on Tuesday, the seventh. And so based on the current rules, the first meeting in February currently will be Wednesday, February eighth. Just wanted to make sure you all are aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I would move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Okay. Are there any council members who wish to pull any items? We need a second, sorry.
Second.
Got a second. Any, anyone wish to pull anything from the agenda? Anyone want to wish to pull anything from the agenda? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Can you turn your camera on, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes. The consent agenda is approved, seven to zero. This takes us to the second reading. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
Bill number twenty-two dash one-one-six, an ordinance imposing a marijuana sales tax at the rate of three percent of the receipts from the sale, retail of adult-use marijuana within the city of Independence, Missouri, which shall remain in effect at said rate thereafter until repealed by the voters of the city, calling for the proposition adopting said tax due to place on the ballot at the regularly scheduled election to be held April fourth, 2023, proposing the form of the ballots and directing the city clerk to do all things called for by law in connection with the holding of said election. Second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
To move to amend amendment twenty-two one-six, one-one-six. And I'd like to read the, I know the language has been provided to the council, but I'd like to read this because I think it's important that the citizens know and understand the, what, what's being suggested. So first change would be to remove all the whereas's and replace them with the following four whereas's. Whereas on November eight, 2022, Missouri voters approved an amendment to Article XIV, I'm not sure what number that is, of the Missouri Constitution by amending Section one of Article XIV and enacting a new Section two of Article XIV to remove state prohibitions on the purchase, possession, consumption, use, delivery, manufacture, and sale of marijuana for personal use for adults over the age twenty-one, and imposing a six percent sales tax on the retail purchase of recreational marijuana effective December eight, 2022, Amendment three. And whereas, Section two-point-six, paren five of Article XIV, as enacted by Amendment three, authorizes a city to impose an additional sales tax of up to three percent on the retail purchase of recreational marijuana upon the approval of the mandatory, of the majority of qualified voters in the, in such city. And whereas, city staff has determined that three percent tax on the sale of recreational marijuana in the city would be appropriate and would provide much-needed funding to meet the city's public safety facilities and operational needs. And whereas, the city council of the city of Independence, Missouri, has determined that proposed authorization of a local sales tax on recreational marijuana would be in the best interests of the city. So those are the whereas's. In the ballot language, I would like to change that to add at the beginning of the sentence for ballot language, "for the purpose of funding public safety facilities and operations." And then it goes on to say, "shall the city of Independence, Missouri impose an additional sales tax of three percent on the retail sale of adult-use non-medical marijuana." And then I'd like to add Sections four and five to the ordinance. Section four would read, "The revenue collected from this tax, if approved by the qualified voters of Independence, shall be used for the purpose of public safety facilities and operations." And Section five would read, "That oversight of the use of this tax shall be the responsibility of the Public Safety Tax Committee, at least semi-annually, to ensure the tax is being used in the most efficient, most efficient way." If I receive a second, I'd like to speak to this.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So the whereas's just provide a, a background, really, that is more in line with the purpose of the changes to impact public safety facilities and operations. The, the ballot language is really important, in my view, because it speaks to and specifies that for the purpose of funding sa, public safety facility and operations, that that's what we want, that's what this tax will go toward. And then Sections four and five, really, Section four just adds a, a little bit more clarification on the use of the faci, the, the tax for public safety facilities and operations. And then Section five, many of you know that I was on the Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee. I just think it's really important that this committee have the op, you know, be specified that this committee would be responsible for reviewing the operation of this tax. And so those are, those are my reasons for making this amendment.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
If I may address the city manager.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, Councilmember Steinmeier and I worked fairly hard on some of this language. On the third whereas, I think we discussed, we've got language that says, "meet the city's public safety," and I think we, we had agreed to say, "police and fire" also in that section, did we not?
I believe, I want to make sure that, because we've obviously, as you said, had lots of back-and-forth discussions, so I know there was an iteration that talked about public safety, but I know we also spoke to police and fire facilities and operations. And Councilmember Fears, I apologize if I missed this, but I want to make sure, I believe we also wanted to make certain in there that it said "shall only be used." I don't, if you said that, I apologize. So I just, better safe than sorry.
That's under Section four further down?
Section four further down, correct.
Right.
Okay. You're speaking to the ballot language itself?
Nope, under the third whereas.
The third whereas. One moment, let me get there. Much-needed funding for, okay, yep, I see what you're speaking to.
Yep, I think you just missed one of the public safeties in there.
Yep, yep. Find and replace doesn't catch everything.
Any further discussion, councilmember?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed, or do you still want the floor?
I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, I just want to make sure that I am completely understanding, if there were substitute language that said "police and fire," that would not be to the exclusion of other public safety operations, specifically dispatch and emergency operations. So I just would love for you to speak to that, please.
Would be happy to. So as we stand today, of course, police and fire supports the traditional services we're thinking of, but it also supports emergency dispatching, it supports emergency preparedness needs, and of course, you know, as future councils and, and our community adapts and changes to times, there may be additional divisions and services that fall into that, but police and fire are, are very broadly encompassing of, of public safety needs, correct? Councilmember McCandless.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Yeah, I, I'm just at a bit of a loss, because we did, we worked from this morning all the way up until almost meeting time on some of the language proposals, language It was a, an effort by many, it wasn't one, but somehow that language disappeared, and it, it concerns me. I, I do not apologize for when we ask taxpayers for a dime, that they get a dime's worth of service, and that they have the highest levels of accountability and, and having exact language, I will not apologize for. If this is for a building, and I agree, we need a building, then we need to just be really conscientious that when we come to the taxpayer and ask them to help us fund that, that they know what they're buying. And so I, I don't, I'm, I'm a little frustrated right now because I felt like we really worked hard on this collectively, and somehow the language disappeared. So if we do, do not make the change to that language, specific language, I will be voting
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can we clarify what the exact language is we're voting on to amend, as far as the, what it says in Section four?
So it, Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Apologize. So there are three places in the revised language where we, the, the whereas's as read by Councilmember Fears would stand, except for if the council wishes to replace the phrase "public safety" with "police and fire," that would change in whereas, number three. So skipping ahead on that, it would, I'm picking up here where it says, "provide much-needed funding to meet the city's police and fire facilities and operational needs." That, that, that would change there. Then skipping, the next place where that is at, and the council would want to make sure we're clear on this, in the ballot language, "for the purpose of funding police and fire facilities and operations," blah, blah. And then the fourth being in that Section four, where it reads, "shall only be used for the purpose of police and fire facilities and operations." Those are the four places where that would need to be, if, if, the only other reference to public safety, and this would need to stand, would be the Public Safety Sales Tax Committee to be the overseeing group, because that is in fact the name of that body. Otherwise, we would capture police and fire and, and place a public safety in those four other spots.
So that, that is not what my amendment stated. So, um, I, I'm, I mean, so that's not, that's not what my amendment stated. My amendment was for public safety, stated public safety. I think- I think public safety obviously includes police, fire, but other operations like dispatch, emergency preparedness, things of that nature, all are encompassed in that area. You know, I don't know what facilities or operations we're going to need in the future. There could be some other public safety facility operation that we need. And I'd like, I just think that the broader language is a little more helpful in this regard.
If I can indulge the council on this, and I've got a cut question for Mr. Kovar first. Could I call for a recess here with the wish of printing this out so every council member can get a copy of it and make sure that we know exactly what we're voting on and exactly the language? So my question to you is kind of twofold. Can the motion stay on the table while we take a recess, print copies of this, get a printed copy to everyone, so we can come back, look at it, and make sure that we're all on the same hymnal, same page?
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. If, if there's no objections from any of my colleagues, let's take about a 10-minute recess, get a copy of this, get it printed, and we'll come back at 10, or excuse me, not 10, 7:03. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, proceed.
You'll make electronic copy?
We'll get you an email to it, to you. You bet. Thank you for reminding us. With that, we'll take a recess until, I'll make it 7:04 now. Dr. McCandless, did you get two emails with the language?
I, I do, thank you.
Should be one with blue print on the changes, and then one with red print on the changes. And to make it easy, from a color standpoint, the one in red is Councilmember Fears' recommendation. So, Mr. City Manager, if I can, and this might be a difficult question, is compare and contrast on the fly between Councilmember Fears' recommendation and the language in the blue document. What do you see is the difference?
The only difference, and the point that needs to be receiving a decision from the council at this juncture, is in those four places that I referenced prior to the break. And just as a reminder, whereas number three, the actual proposed ballot language itself, and the Section Four, so I apologize, I said four spots, it's only in three. We need to decide if we are going to use the words "public safety" prior to "facilities and operations," or we are going to use the words "police and fire," "facilities and operations."
If I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. City Manager, and that is the distinction, the difference is in those spots?
Yes, sir.
Adding in the words "police and fire" rather than "public safety." Councilmember Fears, proceed.
If I could ask City Manager a question?
Sure.
Mr. City Manager, is it not generally understood in, in almost every setting that I can think of that police and fire are included in the definition of public safety?
I, of course, being a matter of opinion, yes. I believe, you know, at an industry conference, most are going to understand generally, public safety to encompass both of those two departments in public services, police and fire service.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, we still have Councilmember Fears' version in front of us, any discussion on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Stewart, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Stewart, or Councilmember Stewart, please proceed.
So, just my opinion on this, I would like to actually just maybe keep the ballot language the same, and just change one of the whereas's to "police and fire," if that's possible, and then if there was ever any question on the ballot language, my understanding, they would go back and look at the actual ordinance to know that it was for "police and fire." That would be what I would like to see done.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
You know, broad terms in this city, real broad language, hasn't done well historically, I don't think, if I remember right, and Mr. Walker, you may have to help me on this, but the first time the use tax was proposed, it was pretty much general revenue purposes, just a broad, really loose, because we're just going to trust everybody in government to do the right thing. I don't fit in that category, but, and if I remember right, it kind of got crushed in that vote. Do you remember what the numbers of, what the percentage was that voted no on that one?
So, I've been over here nodding my head, and I remember people can't hear me nodding. The initial use tax was ran with the language to support general municipal revenues, and our informational materials that were put out talked about the loss of traditional brick and mortar sales, and the sales taxes that went along with those, and a loophole that had opened, kind of a support the mom and pop shops of Main Street, and you're correct, that I believe it was nearly, and it may have exceeded 60%, no for that issue.
So, we kind of regrouped on that, and that's, if I remember right, that's how we got Prop P.
So, we came back after that issue, and regrouped, and assessed, and the council at the time identified some of the primary needs that they were hearing from the community, which at that time, the city had inherited exclusive responsibilities for operations of the animal shelter, and of course, the long discussed issue of adding additional police officers, and that's where those two issues were identified, and then council decided, well, once those two are funded adequately, and those were defined as, you know, we won't get into that history, but then would Walker fall to their respective sales taxes after that? But yes, primarily, two issues had to be funded first before the other sales taxes could receive their allocated amount.
And so, we were able to kind of change the perspective of the voter by being more specific in the language.
That seemed to help, yes.
And people seemed to like that, because they approved it, and I just look at this kind of in the same way. The city historically does not like broad-based tax revenue, they want to know what you're going to spend it on, we're going to raise it for this, spend it on this, and then we have accountability groups, citizen oversight groups, and that's the way it should be, so that there's checks and balances for your tax dollars. I cannot support this, and it's not because of anything other than, it's too broad for me. I don't share the same opinion that we should just put the monies in the general fund and just trust everybody to do the right thing. We historically have not had a good practice of that. I think putting "police and fire," "facilities and operations" in the language protects us, protects you, and that's why I'm here, it's my tax dollars too, I want them protected just like yours, so I can't support this, I will support this.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Excuse me. Okay, I think, if I may, address the City Manager.
Please.
I think Councilmember McCandless asked this, but I want to double check, so if we put "police and fire" in the ballot language, if there is a desire, a need, or some future use to spend this on dispatch or our emergency operations, I would assume our police and fire folks would agree that those are public safety-related. I don't know that we have any other departments that are directly public safety-related. I mean, bridges are, there's lots of things that relate to public safety, but, I mean, directly related to public safety. So, are they closely related enough to police and fire to apply under that ballot language, or would we be limiting ourselves?
So, here would be my thought, and my recommendation at this time on this, and that would be in alignment with something that Councilmember Stewart said a minute ago. Ballot language is typically written by the state legislature when they authorize a tax that municipalities can go and pursue. We're not working with that in this instance, because this is a ballot initiative created by groups out there, that's part of their ballot initiative, said you can go and pursue this 3% tax, but it did not write ballot language, so that's why we are the architects of that language here tonight. It's been my experience that with ballot language itself, it is better in terms of being successful if you are direct and truncated with it, but an ordinance, which Councilmember Stewart spoke to being, you know, kind of that archival history that people can go back to and refer to, can then outline, and we could get as specific as we want in drafting that tonight, we could mention things like dispatch, things like emergency preparedness, you know, that might give the council, if I'm hearing some of the Councilmember Steinmeier's thoughts correctly, that might provide a level of assurance that you don't get a tricky City Manager someday, not that I would ever do this, that says something like, "Oh, dangerous buildings are a public safety issue, we should use the money for that." So, it would provide some latitude in making ballot language that's easy for everyone to understand when they're sitting down on April the 4th at their polling place, but an ordinance that provides specificity about what the council's intentions were, and thinking it was appropriate to bring this matter forward to your voters.
You know, I, then I think, I think what I'd like to see is a whereas section, not to further complicate things, I think I'd like to see a whereas section that defines public safety for use in this ordinance, that says, for clarification in this ordinance, public safety includes police, fire, emergency operations, and dispatch services as provided by the City of Independence, or whatever the appropriate terms would be. And then I would like to see, you know, public safety still used on the actual ballot language itself. I very much appreciate what my colleagues have all commented on and said, and I appreciate the different viewpoints that they come at it from, I really do, and I remember working on Prop P on the committee in the campaign, and I remember what a time that we spent rejiggering the language, and also having to go back and look at the ordinance, because even the language itself didn't quite, it wasn't quite written the way that even the drafters at the time thought it was written. So, we did actually refer back to the ordinance when crafting the new language, and I know Mr. Covert worked on that. So, I think that's probably the way I would like to see that written, so that it spelled out the different things it could be used for. Now, this is adding a couple of items, if my colleagues agree, it would still be limiting, but at least it would reduce some ambiguity, and it could even say for only these exclusive, you know, exclusively for these departments or services.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
Councilmember Hobart, I thank you for your elegant solution, I think that satisfies my concerns. I also hope that we take one moment, and while we're parsing the tiny bits of words here and there, I just am extremely pleased that the group has coalesced around the need to address facility issues, obviously primarily for the police, and that our work here doesn't end tonight, because we have to then commit ourselves to the residual financing that is required to complete this work. So, I just want us to be sure that we finish the work after this particular ordinance, there will be more to come, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fears.
If I could address Mr. Hobart, just wondering if in the third whereas, if we just put after the words "public safety," if we put in parentheses, "police, fire, dispatch, and emergency preparedness" in parentheses, I think that addresses really what you're talking about in another whereas, also addresses what Councilmember Steinmeier was requesting, and I would be comfortable with that if the second or to my motion is in agreement.
So, this is an amendment to the amendment?
Well, it's a change to the amendment.
Change the amendment? Right. It's a separate motion, so you're making a motion?
Okay, I'll make that as a second, a separate motion, and if that's what you'd like.
That's what we've got to do, so we've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second, and if you can state that again, so that, Madam Slay-Crcher, you were able to copy down the language, can you read the language back to us, please?
The third whereas paragraph would state, whereas city staff has determined that a 3% tax on the sale of recreational marijuana in the city would be appropriate, and would provide much-needed funding to meet the city's public safety parentheses, police, fire, dispatch, emergency preparedness, close parentheses, facilities and operational needs.
I would say, Mr. Covert, should we add the word "exclusively" in there?
That's up to you all.
I want to make sure that it's clear that we're defining public safety as those specific and exclusive departments.
Then I would add language to that effect.
Yeah, so in the parentheses.
You want to add exclusively after the firing facilities in?
Yeah, I would say in the parentheses, and say "public safety," which is, or if Mr. Covert has more appropriate language.
If you wanted, if we're trying to be succinct, you could just say, limited to police, fire, dispatch, and emergency, I keep hearing either operations or services, but I'm not sure what the current word is, but you could just say in the parentheses, limited to those areas, if you want.
That's correct, and whatever, Mr. Wa, is it emergency operations, is that the?
Emergency preparedness.
Preparedness, pardon me.
That'd be fine with me to change it as.
Councilmember Fears is good with that. We, gentlemen, we can't have a meeting on the side, we have to talk into the microphones, people need to hear it, we're going to be violating sunshine if we do it that way. So, what's your recommendations, and what's your thoughts? If you need to think out loud, we'll give you that license.
For clarification, for everyone else, the amendment would be, to Mr. Fears, to the red copy, would be to add to the third whereas, in the, it would be to add a parentheses after "public safety" that says, parentheses, limited to, police, fire, dispatch, and emergency preparedness, in parentheses, facilities and operations. In that way, that would cover all our bases on public safety throughout the ordinance, and cover the definition for purposes of the ballot language.
Okay, I'm going to have you repeat it one more time, were you able to get the language? Okay, can you read it back? And this, what we're going to do then, since we've got, you never received a second on your amendment, though?
No, we didn't.
On your amendment? Oh, Bridgette did? Okay, thank you. So, we've got the amendment to the amendment, are you willing to add this language into your amendment to the amendment?
Yes.
So, okay, so we'll consider it that way, and Councilmember McCandless, are you good with changing the language, as Mr. Hobart has stated it?
Yes.
Okay, that way, we've got the motion and the second, we've got agreement, okay. Please proceed, and please read it again.
So, the whereas paragraph has been changed to, whereas city staff has determined that a 3% tax on the sale of recreational marijuana in the city would be appropriate, and would provide much-needed funding to meet the city's public safety parentheses, limited to police, fire, dispatch, and emergency preparedness, close parentheses, facilities and operational needs.
Any further discussion on the amendment to the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, at the risk of being a thorn, but I think it's, the language, as I heard that read back, perhaps we should specify to say, emergency communications, because we do have several dispatch functions in the city, we've got dispatching for the utilities, dispatching for, right, but should we specify that this is emergency communications instead of dispatch, so that one doesn't get confused and think that we're utilizing these funds for utility dispatching, animal services dispatching?
Okay.
So, substitute the word dispatch with emergency communications.
I'd agree with that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree.
All right. So, we're refining this amendment to the amendment, and can you read just after, funding to meet the city's needs, and then start the parentheses?
Can I get clarification?
Sure.
Sorry, so the dispatch, what's the language that we want there?
Emergency communications.
Emergency communications.
So, in the parentheses would be police, limited to police, fire, emergency communications, and emergency preparedness.
Facilities, and then it'd be closed parentheses and facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like it re-read?
Yep, and councilmembers, 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 we cannot have a meeting on the side, I apologize, but we can't do it.
It's a question of point of order, I'm trying to...
And that's fine, but we've got to do it as a group.
Well, that's fine, then I have a point of order, if I could, please.
Okay, proceed with your point of order.
I would like to know, do we have a motion on the floor, originally, when this came up, Councilmember Fears made a motion to amend, and began to go through this process.
That's correct.
Did we take care of that motion before we began to change all of this?
No, the way that it stands is, once you have a motion on the floor, which he has in red, then what we have right now is an amendment to the amendment, so this item right here is the amendment that he's making to the ordinance that we had, once he has that amendment, we can actually do amendments to the amendment, we have a motion on the floor for the amendment to the amendment, made by Councilmember Fears and Councilmember McCandless, we are then actually drafting that as we speak, and that's where we stand, that is my ruling is on the point of order, if I have any, unless there's any objections to that, but that's how I'm understanding it, does that answer your question?
I just wanted to be clear for not just us, but for everybody watching, so...
Absolutely, no, I think it's a great question, I think it's a great question, a very fair question, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same handle, same page, so we're actually discussing and talking about the amendment to the amendment, and changing So, we're actually discussing and talking about the amendment to the amendment and changing that third whereas. I'm going to have the city clerk read it again, please, so that we're all on the same hymnal, same page. So, could you start after the part, so we don't have to read it all again? This, you know, "funding to meet the city's..."
Funding to meet the city's public safety, open parentheses, "limited to police, fire, emergency communications, dispatch, and emergency preparedness," closed parentheses, "facilities and operational needs."
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any further discussion on that or any other tweaking?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So, are we just voting on the amendment to the amendment, or just the original?
That's correct. We will just vote on the amendment to the amendment. Once that is adopted or declined, then we'll go back to the main, the main motion, which is the amendment.
Thank you for that awesome clarification.
Anyone else? Okay, let's, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment to the amendment.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinermeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the amendment to the amendment passes seven zero. Now, we're going back to the main item that he had, that is the one in red, and that is open for general discussion at this time. Any further discussion on this item? Any further discussion on this item? All right, we're going to vote on it then. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinermeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the amendment passes seven to zero.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay. Now, we need a motion to approve this item, so, and...
Mr. Mayor.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Who, Councilmember Hobart?
Move to approve.
Okay, sounds very good. Councilmember Fears seconded it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll, so we can finally approve this item.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinermeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the marijuana sales tax ordinance has in fact passed seven to zero. Thank you all for your work there. Okay. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
Bill number 23-002, an ordinance finding and granting two 10-foot general utility easements to Spire Missouri, Inc., across part of lots 1 and 2 of Morningside Heights. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinermeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, 23-002 passes seven zero. This takes us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 23-004, an ordinance authorizing the increase of expenditures for salaries for lifeguards at the Adventure Related Oasis Water Complex for $58,434 and making the necessary appropriations. Bill number 23-005, an ordinance approving rezoning from District I-1 Industrial, District R-6 Single Family Residential for the properties at 709 and 713 South Willis Avenue in Independence, Missouri.
That brings us, if I'm correct, to Councilmember Converts, Councilmember Stewart, you're free to proceed.
Nothing to nightmare, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins, you're free to proceed.
Nothing to nightmare.
Thank you. You guys are amended out, is that it? Councilmember Fears?
Just a general comment that, you know, last week was a busy week with a number of meetings, appreciated all the citizen input that we received from, at those meetings. I really, you know, I did, personally, I tried to listen very carefully to what was said, and that was the reason for some of the actions taken tonight, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hobart?
I want to, I want to thank my colleagues tonight. Every one of us worked really hard on this issue tonight and to get us this far, and, man, it feels really good to take this step. I see a chief in the back of the room that I know is really happy, and we'll get to walk into a station full of guys that will have some hope of getting some new facilities. And the one sitting right next to him also has a roadmap, so, we're happy for all you folks, and we're going to do what we can for all of you equally. I went to the Martin Luther King celebration at the Truman Memorial last night, which our mayor spoke so eloquently at, and one of the speakers there, one of the reverends, she was moving, but in between speakers, she sort of sang a verse, and she said, "Let all these folk that's with me, God, have everything they need." And I wish that for all of us. Everybody in here, all of us up here, everybody watching, Ken Love.
We're not supposed to address anybody individually from the council, from the dais, councilmember.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinermeier?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, first, I want to say thank you to the city staff. They burned the candle at both ends last week with all the meetings that we had, so I really appreciate helping accommodate, putting those together. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of long days, so I do appreciate your efforts in helping us keep the city moving forward, so thank you very much on that. I don't, I don't want people to think that my emotions should be regarded as anything but concerning care for your homes, your families. I'm, I just get passionate about things that are important to you, because they're important to me, too, and I make no apologies for wanting to stand and fight for what I think is right for you and what you tell me you want. So, I know things like tonight become a little difficult, a little confusing, but in the end, it's well worth it. The work now has to be done, we have to convince you after this that we need to be able to pay for this, so we have to come to you with good plans to finance a new building, and so, we're going to start working on that, that's our commitment to you, we want to see that happen, but we want to do it in the most fiscally responsible way, and that's my commitment to you, and I'm sure the others will feel the same way as we move on. I did want to, I was thinking about this the other day, Mr. Walker, we had, do you recall the DKMT study that we had, their recommendations, all that, that they brought to the council, I think about a year and a half ago, maybe?
Somewhere in that timeline, and yes, I do, I do recall that.
And I know we voted it down, but we said, "They did a nice job," we did, we voted down, they, them, that company bringing oversight, like the consul, the consultation of it, but we said, "We liked what we saw, and there were parts of it we would like to begin to implement as a business plan." And we asked at some points, and I remember this, we asked that we'd get some updates, because we felt like there was some benefit to the monies that we spent for the study and to help IPL continue to go forward. I mean, is that how you remember it?
I would only maybe amend one thing.
Yeah.
Give the council a little bit more credit in that you did authorize us to do that initial study and business plan with DKMT. It was the decision of the council not to move forward into a more extended engagement.
Right.
But, but yes, you did authorize as a body us to do that first preliminary review and business planning that was presented to you. Yes, sir.
Is there a way we can, in the weeks to come, maybe have you and just sit with Mr. Nail and see if there's pieces and parts of that business plan that we thought would be beneficial to maybe just bring an update to us on any of those, if there's something? If not, that's okay, too, but I felt like we did say that we would like to have an update at some point, so...
Mr. Nail gets the shakes if he doesn't get to speak at a study session after a while, so, yes, we would be, of course, teasing, but yes, we would be happy to take another look at that. I know about, generally about a month ago, Mr. Nail presented at a public utility advisory board meeting about some of the forward-facing issues that are getting closer and closer in that rearview mirror, which were a part of that DKMT study, but through that lens, let us go back and look at that and make sure we've got all of our recommendations that were made and maybe a status update on implementation.
Yeah, and I, I just think it was a good business plan to kind of launch from, but if there's, and I got to go find my book, I know I've got it still, so...
Certainly.
Because it was good, I thought it, I thought it was money well spent, we just, we felt like there was just some things we could do on our own, and I just want to see if we had it, so...
We'll circle up tomorrow's staff and make a review and get back in front of the council with that.
I appreciate that. Thanks for putting up with us tonight, appreciate everybody being here tonight, thank you.
Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
Thank you. Since I have the cred, I was not able to join the Charter Commission this evening for their first meeting, and I just wanted to extend my gratitude for them being willing to serve and for what I'm sure will be really interesting and sometimes challenging conversations with no shortage of people having an opinion of how that should turn out, and I just encourage them in their work and on their hard days know that the city council appreciates the dedication and honorable nature of the efforts that they provide. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I also want to thank everyone who attended last night Martin Luther King's remembrance, it was the 36th anniversary of that here in the city, and there was quite a few people there, probably a hundred or plus or so, and they did a great job. Also, we, the Charter Commission has actually started its first level of work, and they did elect a vice chairman, and his name is Tom Waters, so they did elect a vice chairman, and his name is Tom Waters. So, I have the utmost respect for Tom, worked with him on a number of occasions, and I think he will be a great addition to the leadership of that group. With that being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Hold on just one second, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything you want to add?
Nothing else tonight, sir, thank you.
Yes. There was the announcement that it was going to be on Wednesday, so the question is, when our next meeting is?
[inaudible]
Okay.
My announcement was just that currently it will be on Wednesday unless there is a vote from you all to change it.
Okay. Is there any issues from your perspective, Mr. City Manager, to keep it to that Wednesday?
We are prepared for Wednesday.
Okay, with that being said, we'll, excuse me?
I was going to ask, Mr. Mayor, because there are no municipal issues, is it more convenient for staff and council just to remain on Monday than we don't have any conflicts?
Uh...
If there is, I'll...
There may be an issue, and that's what we need to get with, the issue is mostly with Mr. Scannell's staff.
So, here's the, here's the situation, we have, based on the rules as they are written, we have advertised the public hearings.
That's correct.
For upcoming planning commission meetings to reflect that Wednesday.
Perfect.
It would be, it would be easier to keep it the way it is right now.
Got you.
Okay, all right.
Perfect.
All right, very good.
Stop, please.
And you need a moment to chat?
The rules state that we would have a meeting on a Wednesday if there was an election to be held on a Tuesday, okay? The staff advertised those meetings for Monday because there is no election actually being held on February 7th, but the city attorney, erring on the side of caution, has said, "A strict interpretation of the rule says that you will move your meeting when there is to be an election." So, your rules have you meeting Wednesday, but we have advertised those public hearings for that Monday.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'll make a motion to...
Well, hold on, if we're going to do that, we just suspend the rules first.
I understand.
This is the...
No, I understand.
Council comments, so, the first motion has to be to suspend the rules, then the second motion for that.
I understand.
So, please proceed.
I would move to suspend the rules, the council procedure, to make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, and...
I'm sorry, Mayor, before you vote, do we still have Councilmember McCandless?
We still have a quorum.
Okay, okay, just, I couldn't see her, but I was just making, okay, go ahead.
And he hadn't been in the gavel.
I understand, no, you're, I was just pointing it out, so, no, you're fine to proceed, I just wanted to check and see if we had her or not, I couldn't see her.
Please proceed.
Oh, we're just made a motion to suspend the rules so that we can make a motion to, and there's been a second, so...
Right, and, and so, I just want to clarify something if I can with the city manager, so your recommendation is stay on the Monday?
I would, because there is no election happening that Tuesday, number one, which I know was the intent of the council, but the rules read the way they read, and because Mr. Scannell has advertised those public hearings to be on, to line up with that Monday, I would recommend that in this instance, the council suspend its rules and have a meeting on Monday, February 6th.
As long as we got that recommendation, because I just, I know it was an issue before, and I want to be respectful of Mr. Scannell's work that he's done, so...
Thank you for the cleanup on this.
Sure. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, there'll be, we're now voting on the motion to suspend the rules.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinermeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would vote to move our Wednesday, February 8th meeting to Wednesday, February, or Monday, February 6th.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to move the meeting to Monday, February 6th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinermeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, so, we'll see everyone on February 6th, it passes seven zero. With that, I will now call, well, do you have anything else, Mr. City Manager, that you would like to add?
I do not, sir, thank you.
You bet. I've missed that in the past, and I want to apologize, so, with that being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned, thank you.